Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, June 6th. This is the Moscow City Council. Jim?
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. The next thing on our agenda is a consent agenda.
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Catherine to approve the consent agenda as is. I'll start to roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to the next thing, which is staff recognition report. Gary?
Your honor, I don't have a formal report tonight. However, the volunteer fire department has had some trying days the last couple of days, so Councilmember Walter Steed has asked if he could say a few words.
Okay, Walter, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary. As liaison from the council to the volunteer fire department, I tend to pay attention to what kind of calls they're getting, what kind of response they're having to make, vehicles, personnel, et cetera. And last Thursday afternoon at 4:50, there was a call for an injury accident in Highway 95 North and Estes Road. I kind of perked my ears up a little bit, just trying to pay attention. Then at 5:01, another call came in for a hazmat incident regarding some chemical barrels on some property in town. Okay, my other ear went up, listening to that one. Four minutes later, there was a call for a medical here in town. And at 5:18, there was a call for a medical rendezvous with Troy. That was 27 minutes, four calls, and the chief's going to speak in a moment about what kind of people and equipment turned out for that. But I was so impressed with the way it was handled, by the way that Whitcom, our dispatch center, handled it. The lady over there, I have no idea who she was, but she kept it straight as to what call, what rig, what person, what volunteer number, and it really worked well. And I was so impressed. The next day, I called Gary and asked him about if he had anything for tonight, and if he didn't, I said, "Well, I did have something I'd like to put out." I told one of the paramedics about this at the Lee Newbell Fair on Saturday, that I was going to do it, and he said, "Were you listening Friday?" I said, "No, I was down at the ballgame at Lewiston. What happened Friday?" He said, "There were four more. They're really tight." On Friday, at 5 o'clock, there was an out-of-town transfer, requires an ambulance and a crew; 5:15, a medical rendezvous, again with Troy; 5:27, a fire on a grill; and at 5:47, accident involving a bike. That was only 46 minutes in length to do all of that. So with that, I want to just recognize the volunteer fire department, the work that they do, the paramedics, the EMTs, the fire personnel, and ask the chief to come to speak about this kind of activity.
Welcome to you, Nigerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Steed, thank you. You know, coming here almost two years ago, I didn't know what to expect. And I have been so pleased and impressed with what we can do with what we have. And I'm glad Walter points out those calls on Thursday and Friday, but not only that, that happens every day, and a lot of people don't know that. We're already 73 calls ahead of last year in this short amount of time, in five months. Fifty percent of the time, we have two calls at the same time, anyway. That's not uncommon for us. It does get to be uncommon at three and four calls, five calls, except for during a disaster event-type thing, wind or a storm. But our volunteers put so much time in and dedication in and make sure that we make every call in a timely manner, timely fashion, every single day, 365, 24/7. And, you know, like I said, coming here is like, wow, we run, you know, a few calls, and we actually run more than I even anticipated. But we tend to cover every call in a very reasonable, if not a short, amount of time. You know, we always struggle sometimes, you know, some days during the day, during the week, but for the most part, we get out the door in less than three, four minutes. We get there in five or six. Luckily, we have a smaller, a little bit smaller town to get around town, and very easy to get around. So with that being said, our volunteers take off from lunch, dinner, family time, nighttime, 2:00 in the morning, just to go to all these calls, and they don't ask for anything other than a thank you. So, you know, I appreciate what you guys give back to the volunteers and do for them and support them and support all the things that we try to do, and we go far above and beyond what most volunteer organizations do across the country. And over the next while, hopefully a year or so, we're going to try to do some more research on how many calls and how effective, you know, we are compared to a lot of these places that don't, that can't do what we do. You know, there's organizations that run three, four, 500 calls that are hard to fill, even their call, one call a day. So with us covering three, four at a time, a very serious accident, North 95, two ambulances, still getting the medic unit to go to Troy, another ambulance to go to a medical, there's not a lot of places that can do that. And we're just, I'm just happy to be here, and it's not me, it's all 100 of those volunteers. It's not me. They do the work. We just help provide them the tools to do it. So that's what I got.
Well, Chief Nigerson, this community, and there's quite a few, quite a number of people that do recognize what the volunteers do, and it's a very, very important part of this community, has been for decades and decades and decades, as you well know the history of our fire department. So it is a big deal for all of us, and it's a huge savings of rates and monies that this town saves by having a professional volunteer fire department. So they all be very well commended.
We have, right now, we have five, six paramedics. So that's one of the challenge areas that we have. You know, sometimes we're short, or it's hard to fill, fill a need sometimes, but, you know, again, outstanding, we do, we do an outstanding job every day. So those are challenges that we're trying to focus on and how we can better serve even that. So a lot of people don't know we have paramedics, so I hear, out in the community, so.
Yeah, and during the school year, Chief, you have how many resident firefighters that live in the three stations?
We have 24.
And during the summer?
Could be anywhere from one to eight right now.
Yeah. So this was done the other day without the student help. They've all gone off to their summer jobs or to their, to other schooling or whatever. So anyway, kudos to the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Job well done. Okay, the next thing on our agenda will be the mayor's appointments, and it brings me great pleasure to bring forth a person's name to replace Dan Carskellin as our counselor, and that is Gina Terusio. I would entertain a motion from, okay. Well, Mark moved, John and you did a second, so we'll go with you as a second. So we'll start to roll with you, John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay. We will go with the swearing-in of our new counselor. Well, actually, once she's sworn in, she'll be a new counselor. So please come on up, Gina.
Why don't you stand here and face your counsel? Would you like to swear or affirm?
I'll swear.
Okay. Just step that way just a little bit. Towards the line, this line. Raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me.
I, Gina Terusio.
I, Gina Terusio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And then I will faithfully discharge.
And then I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
In the city of Moscow.
In the city of Moscow.
Lake County, Idaho.
Lake County, Idaho.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Gina, please come on up. Yeah?
Congratulations. This is Carskellin, head chair.
Yep, you know, we're sitting next to you.
Me, too.
You're welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the good chair.
Mm-hmm. John, just to run up for you.
Yeah?
Okay, Gina, we're going to let you have a second to say a few words at the new chair and the new place and position up at this, and to us with the rest of us.
Well, I've been pinching myself for the last three days. I can't tell you what a gigantic honor this is for me. I look forward to continuing the collaboration we started with our whole community, the county, the university, the chamber. I'm really, really looking forward to continuing that work and just enjoying the fact that I get to serve my community in another way. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we will move on to other appointments. I have a list of five people here on appointments, and I'll read them off. The prospective commissions, Tina Hilding, Sustainable Environment Commission, expires 12/31/2016; Casey Holcomb, Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, expires 12/31/2017; Kate Geiger, Historic Preservation Commission, expires 12/31/2018; Taylor Rainey, Historic Preservation Commission, expires 12/31/2018; Gary Reidner, Partnership for Economic Prosperity, Board of Directors, no expiration date. John?
I move that we accept this slate.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by John and a second by Art. Walt?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make an amended motion. I would move to accept the four commission appointments and not include the appointment of Gary Reidner to the PEP Board at this time. My reasoning for that, Mayor and council, is that this is unprecedented. As far as I can remember and find out, the city council has always appointed from among themselves members of boards to organizations which we fund. The Police Knowledge Corridor, PIBAC, Clearwater Economic Advisory, the LEDC. The mayor sits on the airport by city code and by the airport itself and their rules and regs. He also sits on the Chamber of Commerce. I understand it's by the Chamber of Commerce's bylaws. But the other boards that are representative of nonprofits which we fund have never been done by mayor appointment. There was a case several years ago with a previous council and a previous mayor where the council wanted to appoint the person to represent the council on the LEDC. The mayor was not really amenable to that, so the council withdrew approval of any and all commission appointments until such time as it could be worked out. I'm not suggesting that here. Don't misunderstand me. But I am just reluctant to, you know, change what we've done for years, which I think has worked very well. In addition to that, Gary has his hands full, in my opinion. This is not personal with Gary. He and I have talked about this, and I think he understands that. It's procedural. But Gary has nine or 10 departments to manage. He has 146 employees as of the middle of this afternoon. He is the interim finance director and serves on other, some other boards, particularly with the transit things and such. So I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable with appointing from a mayoral appointment the city supervisor to one of the boards, even a new one that we fund as the city of Moscow.
Well, Walter, your motion lacks a second. So hearing none, we will move on with the original motion, which was made by John and seconded by Art to approve the five folks that I had introduced earlier. And John, I will start to roll with you.
Excuse me. Aye.
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 No.
Okay. We got four ayes, one nay. Walter being the nay, and we will move on from there. But before we go further, I'd like to see if there's anybody out in the audience that is here that I just named two commissions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to the next thing, which will be a public comment and response period for, that we open up to the mic for 15 minutes for anybody that'd like to address us, as long as it's something that is not on council agenda tonight or not in front of the planning and zoning or the board of adjustments, please come up, state your name, and tell us what's on your mind.
Is this where I would?
Right here, ma'am. If you want to come up, come up to this podium, state your name and address, and...
My name's Mimi Henley. I work for Moscow School District, and I'm here today, oh, I'm here today to talk to you about the summer lunch program that we're starting up next Monday on June 13th. Last year, we fed an average of 205 kids in our community, lunch every day in the parks in Moscow. This year, we've had a little bit of a change in that we're offering this at one park only due to the construction at Gormly. The other site, Syringa Mobile Home Park, we did not actually get the numbers that we would need to make that work again this year. So this year, the free lunch program will be offered at Lena Whitmore School and Lena Whitmore Park. And we're looking forward to having that program. We want to reach as many kids in the community as we can. I guess the other thing that we're adding this year is a partnership with the Bowville Library, where we will be offering snacks at that site. They requested that we provide that service, so I made the application to USDA to do that, and it was all approved. So we're looking forward to working with them. We have many fabulous partnerships connected with the summer lunch program. One of those is a group, a couple of churches and local organization that make weekend meals for kids, kids that don't have food at home, aren't able to have that support at home. So it's St. Mark's Episcopal Church, the Unitarian Universalist Church, and then also Rotary Club and Lions Club that support those meals through donations. So we're looking at kicking that off as well. We also have partnerships with the University of Idaho, their Eat Smart program, Backyard Harvest, and the library, and lots of other programs. And I guess I'm presenting to you so that you know about the program. We'd love to have, reach as many kids as we can. And I guess to do that, I need help with publicity through the city of Moscow sources for that. Does anybody have any questions about the summer lunch program?
A couple of things, and this has been going on for a while, and you folks have done a wonderful job. Our city received a Let's Move Cities Award this past year, and part of that was that very program, one of, that was part of it, the program, the lunch program that you folks put on and do such a wonderful job. Is this something, Gary, we could maybe get on our city website so that people are aware of it? I think that would be terrific, to get that up on the summer, maybe it's something Jen or somebody could put in, so people looking into our website, because there's a lot of folks that do look at that. Maybe I think that is an excellent idea.
That'd be great.
May I just add a question? I was curious, how many kids you think are going to be fed in Bowville?
Well...
Or they come in from outside of Bowville, too?
You know, it's a new program, Catherine, so I really don't know how many. I would predict that there'll be about 30 kids for this snack program. It's good.
That's good.
It's a start. It's a start.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm going to leave a few flyers over here.
Okay.
We'll pass them.
That'd be great.
If you want information on the program, please pick them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to come up and address the council? Okay, well, we'll move on to item number five, which is a public hearing fee resolution amendment, barrier program fees. Gary Reidner, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, your honor. And I do want to make mention, as you did, that the summer meal program has been one of our pillars for our Let's Move Award that we received last year. We were one of the first partners with the school district and the USDA on that program. So it's been a great thing. We promoted it in the past, and Mimi, I think we can find a way to do that again. So, great program. Thank you. Okay, what we have before you tonight is the public hearing for the fee resolution for the barrier program, or barricade program, whichever you prefer. As the council remembers, the city has several police barricades that we've had in our possession for several years, we obtained with a grant many years ago. We don't have occasion to use them very often, in fact, very seldom. One of the things that has been challenging is when the council approves a beer garden or any sort of activity that requires a barricade or barrier. Usually, within those resolutions, there is a certain amount of closed space that must be maintained, and there are limited ingress and ingress out of those spaces. So the idea came forward in order to get some standardization for these sorts of things. Would it be permissible to see if we could use those barricades that aren't being used or likely would not be used for those programs? Council liked the idea. We, council essentially indicated, approved the program at committee to move ahead with a, allowing half of the barricades to be used for the program, keeping half in reserve if there is an incident that needs to be used, and if there is something that requires the, all the barricades be mobilized, then wherever they are, if they're being utilized for a beer garden or some sort of segregated activity, that the first and prioritized use would be for the police use. So with that, became an issue as to what do we want to charge for that? And the fees that were discussed at committee, and which the committee elected to move forward, was to have a fee of $2 per barricade with a damage deposit, if you will.
$110.
Of $110 in case the barricades were damaged and we had to replace them. So Idaho code states that if the council intends to implement a new fee or raise any fee by 5% or more, that a public hearing is required, even for a small fee like this. So the city clerk, we intended to have this before you three weeks ago. We sent the notice to the paper. For some reason, the two publications didn't occur. One occurred, one came too late. So we republished, and that's why we're here tonight. So the code requires a public hearing, and upon the closure of that public hearing, the council is free to approve the fee, modify it, or deny the fee. So I would ask that you have a public hearing.
Questions for Gary before, prior to opening the public hearing?
Yeah, part of the discussion centered on getting all the parts of the code to agree about height standards. Has that been addressed within this resolution or elsewhere?
Yeah, it'll be addressed in the resolution when the council issues a resolution. This is for the program itself to allow the barricades even to be used. But as Rod indicated, I believe, at the last committee meeting, that resolutions will now reflect that the barricades will comply with the requirements of the resolution.
Other questions for Gary before I open up the public hearing?
I have one more question.
Okay.
When I was reading it, we talked about the first year not being a fee. There was some conversation, and I just wanted to be refreshed on that.
Yeah, we talked about that at committee, and committee gave direction that they wanted to start it immediately. So when we brought it to council, you recall, we brought this issue to council to see if they even wanted to proceed with the program prior to looking at a fee. And at that time, the council's direction was to go ahead and implement the fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:25. Anybody in favor or like to speak, please come to the podium. State your name and address, even though we know who you are, Victoria.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly, just so you don't get lonely. So I've heard this in more detail in earlier meetings. I think it's a great idea. You're taking something out of storage and putting it to good use for the uniformity and the ease for people to use it. I think a $2 fee and the deposit is nominal. And do charge it. Don't let that skate off, and go for it. It's a good thing to do.
Thank you, Victoria. Others would like to come up and speak in favor, please step forward at this time. Seeing none others, I would take any kind of comments, whether they're general or opposed, please step forward. Seeing nobody else, I will close the public hearing at 7:26 for discussion with council.
Mr. Mayor.
John?
This is, gone through the council as far as approving the loan. It's been talked about a number of times. A fee schedule has been arrived at. I wish it was a little higher myself, but still, I would say that we should accept this. I'd make a move that we should accept the barrier rental fee and the replacement barrier if lost or damaged fee.
I'd second that.
Okay, John made a motion, and Jim seconded, to approve the recommended fees for the barrier loaner program. Walter, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to the next thing. Thank you very much. Okay, resolution for airport use condemnation proceedings, Gary?
Thank you, your honor.
Have the podium begin, sir.
Thank you. And Tony Bean, the executive director of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, is here as well to answer any questions. I will introduce the subject. What you have in front of you is a resolution that approves the city of Pullman's use of eminent domain, or commonly called condemnation proceedings, for the purpose of acquiring property if necessary, which is necessary for the realignment of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport runway realignment project. As the council well knows, through the many presentations given before the council, the FAA has granted a project, if you will, with a estimated, conservative estimate, meaning hopefully the most expensive it could be, of about $119 million for this project. We have an 8.125% match, thanks to the good work of our congressional representatives and the councils of both, and mayors of both Pullman and Moscow. So it's about, about $109 million grant from the FAA for this project if it goes the full amount. So the FAA wants assurances from the two sponsors, and the two sponsors of the airport, according to the FAA or by FAA regulations, are the city of Pullman and the city of Moscow because we jointly operate the airport. The city of Moscow and the city of Pullman both appoint the airport representatives to the airport board, and under FAA regulations, the sponsors must give approval to the use of eminent domain if necessary in order to move the project forward. Now, it's hoped that it won't be necessary, and since the property is in the state of Washington, the city of Moscow has no eminent domain authority. However, FAA regulations, we approve by resolution, or the council approves by resolution, the use by the city of Pullman, which is located in Washington, and would exercise eminent domain if necessary, to utilize eminent domain for this project. So the resolution that you have before you approves that, use of that eminent domain proceedings if necessary in order to move the project forward. The city of Pullman will be considering a similar, excuse me, resolution at their next meeting as well. I believe they, next meeting, Tony? So they will be looking at something just a little bit different. They approve the use of it, and of course, they will be the ones exercising it if necessary. So with that, I'd stand for any questions, or if you'd like to hear from Tony.
Okay, well, this was heard before the Public Works and Finance Committee on May 31st. Art, you?
It was. So we heard it, ran through the rationale behind it, and thought that this is an appropriate action for the city council to be taking.
action for the city council to be taking.
I had asked some questions, because I came on later to the whole process, and it had to do with, what was the reason that the FAA required the, the change in the whole airport?
Why they're moving ahead with the realignment. I can certainly turn that over to Tony, who knows a lot more about it than I do.
We wouldn't want you to just come and sit there. Tony, please state your name, your position, where you live, and all those things for the record.
Okay, Tony Bean, I'm the executive director of Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. I reside in Pullman. You have the address for just Pullman?
It'll be fine.
Yeah, address is 1125 Southwest Alvar Street in Pullman, Washington. So the reasoning behind why we are doing the project is FAA required standards. Aircraft have gotten to the size that the runway and the taxiway for our airport are too close together to land that size of plane. So what we do right now, because we do not meet the separation requirements, which is a serious safety standard for the FAA, what we do today is, when we're landing a large aircraft that needs that kind of separation standard, they essentially take up all the space. Nothing on a taxiway or a ramp gets to move until that aircraft is landed, taxied, and parked. So we do not have the capability to have two-way traffic at this time. That is a temporary exemption to a standard, and allows us to meet the standard, but it hampers the ability to operate the airport. And with the growth in traffic between Alaska Horizons and as well as Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories, it's not a tenable future. And the FAA has stated that, that it's temporary, you need to solve your problem. This is one of the steps in receiving property necessary for the project to meet that requirement from the agency.
I appreciate that, because there was a lot of talk just about the actual...
The approach.
The approach.
Yes, and the approach is, it's a benefit that's coming with it, but we're not doing the project because of the approach. We're doing the project because of a safety standard.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification.
Other questions for Tony while he's at the podium? Thank you, Tony.
Okay.
Looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I would, I would move approval of the proposed resolution relative to the enabling Pullman to exercise eminent domain as necessary for the project.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Art and a second by Catherine to recommend the approval of the proposed resolution for condemnation proceedings, approval for the city of Pullman. Everybody understand where we're at on this? Okay, I'll start with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. So, there it is. So we will move on to the next item, which is item number seven, bike route facilities plan. Les McDonald, hello, Les.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
Mayor Lambert, members of the council. I am pleased to be able to come before you this evening to talk about something that has become somewhat near and dear to my heart, which is the development of a more robust bicycle network within the city of Moscow. We are a community that really prides itself on being accessible and having the ability for folks to get around town very easily and to get to places they want to go. A large segment of that community likes to do that by bicycle. And unfortunately, as a community, we've not necessarily kept up with the facilities that would support the enthusiasm that our community has for bicycling around the area. So what is before you this evening is culmination of about a year, year and a half of work with the Transportation Commission and Public Works staff to develop a bicycle route map that designates primarily on-street, but also on-trail bicycle routes throughout the community. And then along with that, the proposed facilities that would be installed upon those routes. And those facilities would include things like sharrows and bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, things of that nature. So I'm going to walk you through some of the, I guess, rationale behind this and supporting information. Committee saw this previously, but for those that weren't there, I will, we will go back through it again. I'm going to start with talking a bit about what's in the transportation plan. So the Moscow on the move, multimodal transportation plan, was adopted by the council a couple of years ago. Essentially, it talks in, in some of the early stages about active transportation, that the city has all the ingredients to become a great walking and bicycling city, which to me is a great statement. Means we're well on our way. It's, they, goes on to identify that the city has walkable and bikeable distances, meaning no point within the city really is further than one and three-quarter miles from downtown Moscow or the University of Idaho. For those that get out and walk and ride, it, it's amazing how often they find that, you know, it really doesn't take that long to get somewhere. And especially if you're on a bike, it's surprisingly fast to get across town. It becomes a question of are you comfortable riding the streets as it exists today? But that's something that the consultants pointed out, and they saw that we had a lot of potential here. They also noted that we have a well, well-used trail system, which of course, we continue to attempt to expand, and an active bicycle advocacy community. So that's that segment of the, of the community that I mentioned earlier, that likes to ride and likes to support the addition of riding facilities. The plan also talks about what steps we need to take to become that great walkable and bikeable city. It starts by talking about maintaining the bicycle and walking commute mode share of over 25%. So the mode share is what percentage of the people that are commuting from home to work do so by vehicle, by transit, by bike, by, by foot. In our case, based on the US Census Bureau information through what's called the American Community Survey, and I just still did not correct that number, 2009, not 209, to 2013 data, so a five-year average that was running in that period, our community has a walk-to-work mode share of 18.1%. So roughly 18% of our folks walk to work, which is a phenomenally high number in my mind. But also, a bike-to-work mode share of 4.6%, which is also quite high. A lot of larger communities with more robust bike systems do not have mode shares that high. The total of those two, just under 23%. We're a little shy of that 25% target that the plan says we should strive for, but I think we can get there with some of the things that are proposed on the plan you'll be looking at this evening. The other area it identified was to try to increase the number of non-commute trips. So really, you know, we've been talking about mode share for commuting to work, but these facilities also are great for recreational purposes. And so anything we can do to help increase that number of folks that use those facilities for recreation, for, you know, just getting out to shopping, or whatever it may be, is also beneficial in making us a walkable, bikeable community. And it notes as well that indicators of community walk and bicycle friendliness are achieving these things. So some recommended actions. Within the plan, there are a number of actions in all the variety of different sections that talk about transit and active transportation and vehicular transportation and, and all the other things. In the active transportation section, which primarily deals with walking and bicycles, it really gave us four actions to consider that are related to this topic. First is using, utilizing the active transportation toolkit, which was part of the plan, to develop a variety of facilities usable by people of all ages and abilities. So really making things that all folks can use, whether they have a high interest, whether they ride all the time, or if it's somebody out riding with their children on a Sunday afternoon, you know, whatever age, whatever ability. Action AT3 is to expand the bicycle network as the collector and arterial street network expands. A couple of years ago, the city council adopted new street standards, our minor arterial standard, and the collector streets include bicycle lanes. So any extension of the street network in those two classes will automatically include bicycle network facilities. So we will meet this goal as it relates to expansion of the system. Develop a branded and coordinated active transportation education, encouragement, and public awareness campaign with community partners. This is not yet part of the plan. Transportation Commission is taking this up as one of its current topics. We'll be talking about it a little bit in later this week on Thursday at the next meeting with respect to the ability to create a bicycle tourism campaign within the city and within the region. So that would speak to this particular action. And then finally, AT5 is to produce a bicycle wayfinding signage plan. Well, in addition to what you're going to see tonight on the bike route plan and the facilities that are associated with it, transportation's also been working with staff to create the wayfinding plan. So that has been developed, is a plan that has a lot of detail in it, lots of destinations, lots of locations for signs. So we're, we'll work our way through that in terms of implementation, once the council chooses, if they choose to do so, to approve this plan this evening. That wayfinding signage is integral with a network in that we want folks to understand when they're out riding, how best to get from point A to point B. Because you come to an intersection of bike routes, which one do you take? It's just like you're out on the freeway, you want, you want a sign that's going to tell you, take a right to go downtown, take a left to head over to the Moscow community playfields. There are some challenges. I think we all would recognize that. The plan certainly did. It gave us a number of things, or identified a number of challenges that we would have to consider, topography being one of them. Obviously, the particularly eastern part of the city has more topography, steeper hills. There's this ridge over here on the east side of Main Street that we have to get up in order to reach the eastern half of the community. So the plan does have routes that recognize topography, identify routes that we think are a little easier with respect to those hills versus others that are designated as perhaps more challenging, but possibly more direct for a more advanced bicyclist. It also mentions highway crossings as being challenges. This particular picture on the right is a shot of the Steiner Avenue, White Avenue, and State Highway 8 intersection. So White here to the north, Steiner to the south, State Highway 8. And this is a representation of the underpass that the council has supported previously to connect what will be a pathway here on White, going under the highway, using the existing bridge, and tying into the Paradise Path. That's one location where we've had a lot of interesting discussions about the comfort level, the safety level, for folks that are crossing this highway, either on foot or on bike. And so this is a treatment that the council supported and for which we're applying for grant funds that will help address one of those problematic crossings. Some other items identified, indirect connections or sidewalk coverage problems. There are, and this relates more to the pedestrian side than the bicycle, there are a lot of places in town where the sidewalk just doesn't go through. It's not connected for whatever reason, or the condition is poor. That is a challenge to folks that are trying to use the bike network, or excuse me, the pedestrian network, to get from one area to another. Trail connections, are we appropriately tying together bicycle and sidewalk networks to the trails? In some areas, yes, in other areas, not so much. This plan will help to address a few of those areas. Access to downtown, if you know where you're going, you can get there. It's not always clear or as easy as one might like, so that's what we're trying to help improve. And then commercial center access to those areas, east, west, and north, and to some extent, south of town, where there are commercial enterprises. Additional challenges identified, pedestrian delay in the downtown along highways, you know, difficulty crossing the roads or getting along those roadways. Bicyclist behavior, this is one that we've all experienced. There are a few bikers out there that don't really seem to want to follow the rules in a way that makes sense for everybody. They're the ones that, you know, jump out in front of you on the roadway, or cut through an intersection in a crosswalk, maybe at speed where you're not expecting them to be, those types of things. Those are really best addressed through either enforcement with the police department, but also with education for all the folks involved, not only the bicyclists, but also the people that are driving their cars along the street. What should they expect? You know, what should the bicyclists be doing to make sure that we're following the rules and we're all playing nicely together, so we don't have incidents? Legibility and public awareness, this has to do with understanding where you're going. And so on the right, you'll see a sign example, happens to be from the Gresham area. This is probably similar to what we'll see in our bike wayfinding signage. So in this case, they've got a city logo for Gresham, they have the bike indicating that this is signage, you know, for bike routes, if you will. And then directional information. So if you want to go to City Hall, you go straight, it's .4 miles, or in bicycle speak, about two minutes. And the distance and mileage is, you know, showing both is a pretty common approach. A lot of folks don't really relate to the mileage, how far is .4 on a bicycle versus, oh, it's going to take me two minutes. Or, you know, four minutes if you're going to Springwater Corridor in this case. So that type of thing, to help people understand where they're going, and you have a system that is legible, people can make sense of it. But also public awareness, if you're driving in your car and you're seeing these bike wayfinding signs along with bike route plans or signs, you know then that there are going to be bikes here. I mean, it just helps that overall awareness for all parties. And then general bike walk, bike way and sidewalk maintenance, this probably has as much to do with anything about sweeping, making sure that the bike lanes are properly swept or gravelled as early in the spring as possible, the sidewalks, you know, are maintained clearly for folks that are trying to traverse the walks. The plan talks about kind of facilities that can be addressed, and you'll see these, some of these on the plan that's before you this evening, the bike plan. They include things such as shared roadways, and those are essentially situations where there are no particular areas that the bike is meant to be that are designated for that purpose. They are just out in the lane with the vehicles, sharing the lane. Typically, you'll see signs like this, indicating that, yeah, there are going to be bikes on the road and a share of the road placard underneath. Neighborhood greenways, these are a great facility. The idea here is that out of all the bike routes that you have in your network, the greenways are going to be the friendliest, the ones that potentially have the lowest speeds for vehicles, the lowest traffic volumes, hopefully are going to be through areas that are very appealing to the eye, very nice for people to ride, very comfortable to ride. Typically, they are designated with a sharos system like this, and you've seen that particular emblem on Main Street. And they are often set up such that either the speeds are lower, or stop signs are modified such that it gives some precedence to the bicyclists on these greenway routes. Our very first greenway is slated to open officially tomorrow, 5:00 PM, Friendship Square. The mayor will be there. We will be doing a couple of things at that event, starting with a presentation to the mayor on a, an award that the city has recently received, notifying that we are a bronze category city as an American biking community. That will be followed by a ribbon cutting by the mayor, and then an inaugural ride around the greenway through the city. And so we hope folks will be, be there to join us. There'll be refreshments available, and again, 5:00, Friendship Square, our first ride around the, official ride around the greenway. Really looking forward to it.
It'll be a fun ride.
Be a fun ride.
Okay, questions for Les?
Nope, still going on, so other, other...
Oh, hell, are you done, Les?
No, I'm sorry, not quite, not quite. I just had to pause for that one, so, make the point. Sharrows is, again, they're on the greenways, you'll see, we also have them downtown. You'll see them on other routes that are not really considered greenways, but they're considered areas where we want folks to know that, yes, there are going to be bicycles on the road. It's a shared facility with bikes and vehicles. Bike lanes, you've all seen these, they're pretty traditional, separated space on the roadway marked with a wider white line, bike symbol and arrow indicating direction. There are a number of these proposed within the new plan. There are some of these already within the existing network. A variant on this is a buffered bike lane, so it has the same setup with the, the main line, striping near the curb, bike symbol and the arrow. But then you see a second line out here, and sometimes these little crosshatch marks, that is the buffer zone, as they call it, as in a buffered bike lane. The intent of that is really to provide a little more separation between the vehicle and the bicycle. And normally, these are installed on either higher volume or higher speed roadways, where you've got a pretty good speed differential. So as a biker, if you're doing 10, 15 miles an hour comfortably, but that car's coming by at 35 or 40, not everybody's comfortable with that fact that that vehicle's passing them that much more quickly. So you will see these types of facilities on areas where you tend to have higher speed. We have a few of these proposed within the network, and in the future, I'd like to see some others, possibly out on State Highway 8, heading towards Pullman. Bike lanes are out there already. I think there's room, if I can get ITD convinced, to add at least a couple of foot-wide buffers out in that area. Typically, they're three to as much as five feet wide, the buffer. You can go as little as two, just to provide you some kind of... as two, just to provide you some kind of additional clearance. Cycle tracks, this is not in the plan, but it's something that was in the transportation plan, just pointing out that these are facilities out there. These are separated, dedicated bicycle facilities, they're typically right next to the roadway, like you see in this example. Here, they've actually used some curbing and planters to give you somewhat of a hard barrier between, in this case, it's a two-way cycle track with a center stripe down the middle. Not terribly wide, in this case, when you look at this, this is probably, maybe not even eight feet, seven to eight feet wide, I'd guess, looking at these lanes. Again, we're not really proposing this, the transportation plan did suggest these on the couplet downtown, taking out a travel lane and putting in cycle tracks. I have my doubts we'll ever be able to achieve that with ITD, but it's in the transportation plan. And then, shared use pathways, obviously, we have pathways within the system today, our pathways are shared use in that they're both pedestrian and bicycle, and skateboard, and rollerblade, and even cross-country ski-friendly, if you will. We don't typically separate, like they've done in this particular instance, where they got bikes on one side, pedestrians on the other. Some of the higher volume facilities in bigger cities will do that, we haven't seen the need yet to take that approach. Okay, the plan, transportation plan also recommends that we address what they call a tiered bicycle network, and there are some just basic caveats here that they say, you know, "These will help you get there." And for the most part, we've really adopted this in the plans before you this evening, picking routes that are already well-suited to bicycle travel, and don't reinvent the wheel, don't pick things that you really have to work hard to make them into a route. I mean, people are riding where it makes sense to ride today, based on comfort level, traffic, street width, all those kind of things. So pick those types of routes, again, well-used by bicyclists, it's just kind of a natural. Close gaps in the existing bike network, we have a lot of gaps in our network as it exists today. Provide an east-west and north-south connections, that's important for bikes as well as vehicles in our network. And then, develop more dedicated bicycle facilities, so bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, that we've just touched on. And again, the plan before you this evening, the map, does include the bike lane aspect and buffered bike lanes. This was the map out of the transportation plan. These were the routes that they recommended when the plan was done. There's a lot of overlap between these and what's in the plan before you this evening, or the map before you this evening. There are some areas where we took a different approach, and the map that we prepared was really based on on-the-ground inspection. So physically going out, looking at the individual streets, conditions of the roads, site distances, intersections, what the topography was like, to really pick, okay, of these three options, this street is the best choice. So that is the map that's in your packet this evening. This version on the screen does not include the facilities. And I put this up first because it's a little easier to tell what the bike route designations are. So just to take a moment, run through this, there are three different colors on the map, so the lighter green that you see here, those represent the easy routes, okay? And this color scheme is similar to downhill skiing or cross-country skiing designations, for those that do that, you're familiar with the green, blue, black scheme. So this is on a similar fashion. So the green, easier routes, flatter topography, lower volumes, sometimes lower speeds, you know, just a little more friendly and more comfort, if you will, to take those routes. The blue routes are the intermediates, you see there's a number of them as you work through this part of town, that happens to be where some of the hill is, when you're going from east to west, or west to east, you go up or down this hill through here. Also, on the south end of town, running around in that University of Heights area, there's a lot of topography down there, same thing up over Indian Hills, those kind of areas. So generally, it's gone to an intermediate or blue route, if the topography is more challenging, if you've got bigger hills, or if you're starting to see a little higher traffic volumes or traffic speeds. In some areas, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but there's some little hatchmarks here, and up here, those represent where the hill is steepest, okay? Just to give folks an idea, if I'm going this way, and I know that there's a hill here that's steeper than the rest of the system, it's easier to see on the individual maps. And I might point out for the audience, if anybody's interested, there's a copy of the big map here on the board behind me, if anybody wants to take a peek at that. And then, the black routes, the most difficult, basically the highways, State Highway Eight, US 95, State Highway Eight on this end. And they're on the system, they weren't originally, when I first brought this draft forward to the commission, I did not include those in some areas, particularly through downtown on Third Street. But for those bikers that are more avid, and they're familiar with riding the road, they're comfortable in traffic, they can keep up the speed, they're like, you know, we're part of the group, and part of that slice that wants to go out and ride bikes. So having these routes designated is important for us as well, and so, here they are. There are those that are going to be comfortable riding Third Street through downtown, and others will never do it, and that's fine. That's why we have a variety of difficulty levels here, if you will. So those are the more difficult routes, primarily it's traffic congestion and higher speeds, higher volumes. So you get out on, you know, Pullman Highway, it's pushing up to 35, 45, as you get out towards the state line, not everybody wants to do that. And then, the map that's actually in your packet is this version, the 2016 Bike Route and Facilities Plan. It has that underlying set of information about the bike route designations, but also, on top of that, then, are the facilities that are proposed along each of these routes. So those include share-os, bike lanes, and buffered bike lanes, and then, in some cases, pathways. In the map, it's a little easier to see than on the big screen, what the underlying colors are for the routes, and then the facilities themselves. And again, for the folks interested, there's a large-scale map behind me, if they want to take a look. So that is the map that's before you, and what would be included through adoption of the resolution this evening. Just one, couple last little things here, and then I will be done. The plan also talks about where we go from here, future enhancements and programs. Education outreach is obviously a huge piece, and we have a lot of work to do there, to help the bicyclists and the drivers and everybody understand the system, what the rules are, how it works, what the signs mean, you know, how to get from point A to point B. That type of education's going to be, you know, through face-to-face type things, through press releases, through articles with the paper, websites, social media, you know, maps that we'll produce, the whole works, there's a wide range of things that we anticipate there. Signage and wayfinding plan, we talked about that a little earlier, obviously, that will have to be implemented. Here on the right, you see the Moscow Greenway sign, this is what you will see out on the trail, or out on the greenway tomorrow, if you come take a ride with us. Those are in place, at least in one direction on the route today. Into-trip facilities, you know, things like covered bike parking, here's an interesting example of one of those types of facilities, they come in all shapes and sizes. We will be building a covered bike parking facility just outside City Hall, right on this bit of green space here, off to my left, that'll happen next summer, so we have grant funding for that. So design for that will happen this fall and winter, and off to construction in the spring. Other facilities like that throughout the downtown, it could include things like, you know, storage for bicycles, repair stations, things like the, over at the library now, if you go out in front of the library, there's an air pump that's there, I'd like to see more of those around the community. University of Idaho has some of those as well. And then, addressing things like maintenance policies, how are we going to maintain these facilities, what gets priority, when does it happen, that type of thing. Crossings, intersections, you know, we mentioned that those are issues identified in the plan. In the future, how do we want to address those? We've talked about one of those or many of those types of intersections we need to address, as well as signal design and timing. Right now, our signals are primarily set up for vehicles, some of them do recognize bicycles, it's a bit spotty, depends on the kind of bike you're riding, where you are on the lane, what the signal location is. Some entities use bicycle signals, so they add additional signal heads at an intersection that are dedicated for bicycles, so that they have a movement within the cycle. Sometimes it's an all-way movement, sometimes it just is a way to get across a busy street, when there's not very many cars on the cross-street, that type of thing. Those are things we'll look at down the road. Okay, the last thing I need to just mention, is it came up in the Public Works Finance Committee last week, a question about, are there any previous resolutions or maps that we need to address with this particular resolution? So we've done some research on that, Rod and I, and our city clerk, Lori, have spent some time looking at those things. What we found is that all the previous resolutions, and there were 1991, 2000, and 2007, addressed motor vehicles on bike and pedestrian facilities, not really designation of bike routes. So the 91 plan initially established that you can't, we're going to create this map, it was called a bike and pedestrian way, because the code in the police power section identifies that you can't drive your vehicles on bike and pedestrian ways. And so, it was a map saying, these are those routes, or these are those places, these are those facilities, that are being referenced in the code. And it's an enforcement issue, really. And it primarily includes facilities around the university, a lot of those walkways that are up there, those types of things, but it also includes Paradise Path, a couple other pass segments around the community, not much outside of the university. That was done in 91, again, the intent was to provide the ability to enforce the no-motor-vehicle rules on the pass. In 2000, it replaced the 91 map, in 2007, it replaced the 2000 map. Those are the only ones that we were able to find, they're not specifically related to bike routes, they're more of a bike facilities for enforcement perspective. So we don't think there's any need to modify the resolution, to address those, because it's a different issue, and that map needs to continue to exist. So with that, I will attempt to answer any questions. The action before you this evening, if you so choose, is the approval of the resolution, which would adopt the Bike Route and Facilities Plan.
Okay, with all that being said, previous resolutions have nothing to do with this resolution, is that correct?
That's correct.
In summary?
Yes.
Any questions for Les?
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
Lot of question, but a comment, and I've commented before, I love the internet. There's a 2014 spokesman review article talking about biking to work in Washington and Idaho. I was questioning Les' 4.6% in Moscow, which I thought was low, turns out it's not. In 2008 to 12, the American Community Survey showed that Moscow was at 5.0%, and of the selected cities they used, in Idaho and Washington, it was the highest percentage of bike to work shown. Caldwell-Nampes were down at .3, Lewiston at .5, Coeur d'Alene .9, Boise 3.7, and like I say, Moscow was shown at 5. The highest one in Washington was Olympia in this list, at 4.1. So, we are a biking community, and I think what's being proposed tonight will help us become more of one, by recognizing the routes and trying to help people find their best way around. It can be a little discouraging to move into town, grab your bike, try to go downtown, and you're looking at some particular hill that does this, and you think, well, I can't go downtown, I'll just get my car. So there will be ways around the map, presumably will help people find that in the wayfinding. So, there you go.
My question is just about tomorrow, and are we, from Friendship Square, are we going east or north to start on the greenway path? I guess, and can people pick up as we go? That's kind of what I was, like, if they weren't going to come all the way down to Friendship Square, can they pick us up on the way?
I actually go in south down Main, and then we'll cross Washington, about Eighth Street, isn't that the intersection? And up, Sixth Street.
Okay.
What is that, Logan, we turn, Logan turn right.
Okay, so we start south.
Start south on Main.
Okay.
The mayor had to memorize it, because he's leading.
Well, I actually wrote it, well, Les and I wrote it.
Right. Had to make sure he didn't take us the wrong direction when we got out there.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, because I think, getting, there's people that'll pick us up, you know, as we go.
Catherine, it's like pushing buttons, you never know where I'm going to go, I mean, I gotta be zooming all over town.
You're gonna take a steep route.
All over the place.
Thank you.
Well, we'll have the ceremony up front with the biking award designation, and some words about the greenway and the bike system, and then the ribbon cutting. The event starts at 5, I suspect we'll probably hit the trail 5:15, 5:20-ish, and if folks want to pick us up on the route along the way, they're certainly welcome to do so.
And there's speaking points, there's spots that Les wants to stop, you know, kind of explain things, as we're going through the...
A few places here and there, people may ask questions.
There's a few places to stop for a few minutes and talk about stuff. So, Gina?
Les, I would like to strongly encourage you to put something of that size down in the chamber for this, I mean, this is the time of year when we start seeing all of the tourists and all of the, you know, what can we do for an hour in our community, and this is a great, great suggestion, get a little exercise, see what's cool. So please do, be sure that we, you use our social media and our marketing ability, too, please.
As it so happens, we have two maps about that size, that will be at Friendship Square tomorrow, on solid boards, we can certainly drop one off at your office.
Excellent, good.
Walter? Any other plans to get this information out, to publish the fact that it exists, or to tell people how they can get a copy, or that kind of thing?
Oh, yes. Obviously, the, you know, the normal outlets, if you will, webpages, social media, those types of things. Social media's already going on the greenway, and the ribbon cutting tomorrow. We anticipate actually creating a fold-up map, similar to what you find in other communities that can end up in places like the chamber, the bike shops, those types of facilities, so somebody comes into town, it's like, how do I get around? Well, here you go. Possibly some smaller-scale maps. And then, we've even talked about things like phone apps, that will go to, like, Google Maps, they will take your map information and incorporate it into their site information, so that if you're in a community and you say, okay, I want to bike from point A to point B, it will pull up the route information and suggest routes for you based upon your bike map. So we're looking at that type of an option, and then, anything else that we can come up with. So, yes, we need to spread the word, and obviously, we have to go through this process first.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the 2016 Bike Route and Facilities Plan, and the attached resolution.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim, and a second by Gina, to approve the 2016 Bike Route and Facilities Plan, and the attached resolution. John, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay, very good, thank you so much, Les, we look forward to it, tomorrow.
Thanks, sir.
It'll be fun. Okay, that is the end of our regular agenda item, so we'll go into reports, I'll start with you, Art.
Yeah, the Public Works and Finance Committee met, and we addressed all of those issues in the regular meeting tonight. Fair and affordable housing met last week, and a lot of the discussion there pertained to what to do with sojourners, and sojourners is requesting a letter of support from the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission in order to seek additional grant funding for them. And so, that will be forthcoming and going through legal, and they are also apt to be pulling city council through administration about any potential for donations to help support their work and their mission. We've got the URA coming up next week, and, let's see, we've got the Chamber of Commerce Dinner coming up this Saturday. And, let's see, URA this week was canceled, and Sustainable Environment Commission will meet a couple weeks from now.
Very good, Catherine?
Planning and zoning met, and they approved the minutes, they had no correspondence. In the Transportation Commission meeting, they had the complete streets policy, and they're going to do a shared reading on complete streets, so that was kind of exciting. And then, they were talking about tourism, and they said there's already an organization in Pullman that's put together a bike tour and maps, and is in the process of redoing those. And they saw a copy, and they said it was very good, and they said Bill Cook is the one cooperating with that group. Their next meeting's canceled, so, Wednesday night. And we spent a lot of time on off-street parking, Mike did a fabulous presentation, again, so much information about how to work on that, and they're, now, the next place is trying to put that ordinance together for parking spaces and landscaping. It's getting quite complicated, and which is really good. I keep the sheet with me, with the matrix that he did of all the stuff, it's very, very interesting. And then, there's some PUD amendment criteria, and then, they're working on a portable sign draft ordinance, that's that banner sign discussion, and so, they're trying to figure out about the feather signs, and so there was discussion about what to do best for that, so they're going to be pushing that forward, I think, to us at some point. They're making some decisions about that, and then they dealt with non-conformities. And that was all for that. And then, historic preservation, they have their Preservation Moscow, their Once-Ayear Newsletter coming out, that publication was started in 96, and this year, they're doing a collage of like, old Moscow, new Moscow, and they're talking about the history of Main Street, and that we had 16-foot sidewalks, and all kinds of others. Barb Coyn, Barb Coynor is the lady that has done all the research for this, and she said, she makes no assumption about Moscow's history, so she's just throwing it all down, kind of, Main Street as our living room. of, Main Street as our living room, that's the theme, so it's really good. And then, they've got a timeline, at one point, they were talking about that there's eighteen bars in Moscow and all the different things that are going on, so she's kind of loading up Moscow Center on that whole thing. And then, there's going to be a quiz, and there's stuff about the farmer's market, all kind of fun stuff. And then, they are talking about the Orchid Awards, so that's coming up, they haven't quite picked a date, should be in September or October, and they've got seven different categories, so they're trying to trim down who they're going to present to. They're working on interpretive signage at the key public buildings in town, and those key public buildings are the Methodist Church, nineteen twelve, and the library, and they have a plan in place for doing like a black background, and so they're trying to tie something together there. They'd like to do workshops, trying to get more of the public interested in historic preservation, and they still need, I think, one person on the commission, because we approved someone tonight, and then, that is it. And then I take over for Moscow Pathways tomorrow, for Jim.
Okay, very good. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. John will be happy to know that I have only one meeting this past year.
I only got one, too, Walter.
Yeah, but, John, it happened to be a three-day meeting in Spokane, May seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and after a plant tour of the Spokane County Regional Award Reclamation Facility, all one afternoon, where the Spokane Valley's previous septic tanks are now going through a water reuse facility, we attended, and Les was there, and either two or three city employees, three, three additional people from Moscow, so we were well-represented with five bodies there. The next two days were meetings, John, and there were only twenty-three of them, and a few of the titles were the keynote of transitioning from water reuse research to urban applications and beyond, reclaimed water one-oh-one, strategic planning and implementation of water reuse projects in the Northwest, engaging the public, water smart funding opportunities, reuse as a solution for TMDLs, for temperate TMDLs, which Les was paying attention to that one, I know. So, anyway, only one meeting, but fairly large one, and good information. I went because of my liaison with P-Bac, and the fact that P-Bac is currently working on potential other sources of water and on possibly using aquifer storage and recovery, which was a part of the last afternoon's presentations, that's all I've got. Uh-uh, uh-uh, what?
Remember, we're gonna do this, the tour of-
Oh, Catherine's gonna take me on a tour of the Moscow Sewer Wastewater Treatment Plant on June sixteenth at four PM, following, right, immediately following P-Bac, all of us-
We can, I'll go.
Gina, you can go, too.
Right on.
Anybody.
Most of us have been sometime in the past, but Art's gonna go, you're gonna go along.
I don't know we're meeting yet, but that's the date, June sixteenth at four PM.
All right, thank you, Walter. Jim?
I really don't have anything, Administrative Committee didn't meet, and none of my other commissions have met since the last meeting, so-
A lot of stuff next time. Gina, you want to talk about Chamber?
For gearing up, I don't remember, I think, but I've been, Art mentioned our annual fundraising auction and dinner dance extravaganza, should be some fun. Our theme this year is, in keeping with the International Year of the Pulse, our theme is the Pulse of the Palouse. So if you don't have your tickets yet, I could probably talk to the person that could sell you a few of them, but it should be fun, and it'll start at five o'clock on Saturday evening and go until we fall over.
Did you say at the Best Western?
I did not, but you know what, it's at the Best Western, thank you.
Okay, John?
Well, like Walter, I only have one meeting to report. The CRO for Affordable Housing is in the process of trying to get all of the paperwork done, get the bids in, so that we can start building a house from the ground up. We've got it down to two bids, Nellis Peterson is working with them, hopefully, he will have something to report to the committee, and we can proceed with that in, I'm not going to say in orderly fashion, but hopefully, move the process along so that we can build a house for, an affordable house for a certain income group of people. Other than that, I've got next, this month's meetings yet to come.
Hey, thank you, John. Couple of things from me, I had an airport board meeting on May the twenty-fifth, some of that stuff, the condemnation thing was one of the things that came in front of this council tonight, that came out of that meeting. And on June second, I addressed a state Elks convention here, the Benemal Protective Order of Elks had well over two hundred people here from not only Idaho, but Washington, Oregon, and Montana as well, and there was a number of different events, and it was an amazing thing for our community. And the people that I talked to were very, very impressed with Moscow, and that's always a good thing to see in the middle of the summer, to have groups like that to come, especially those that have never been here to see our city and see the different things of our city, and a number of them went down to our farmer's market on Saturday, which was absolutely packed, I couldn't believe how busy it was. Walter and I talked about that, because both of us was at the Lee New Bill Safety Fair as well this weekend, and that was a pretty neat event, there was a lot of folks there. Chief Frye and his group handed out a lot of helmets, and there was bike safety and child safety and cars and all those different things, and of course, our firefighters-
Car seat checks.
Yep, all that stuff, it was very nice. Les had talked about tomorrow, the Greenway path that we're going to take, that'll be a fun event, starts at five o'clock, I'm looking forward to that, that'll be a real kick. And then, one thing I wanted to mention, on June thirteenth kicks off a Palouse North Knowledge Corridor Boot Camp this next week, so FYI for all you guys, so I'll be making an address at one of those meetings, I think, on the fourteenth, but that'll be coming up, it'll be fun. Gary, do you have anything, sir?
No, just wanted to report that we had our monthly breakfast meeting last Wednesday, and almost, I think, every sitting council member was there at that meeting, which was nice, the mayor was ill, so unable to make it, but met with the university, school district, and city and county folks, and that's always a good meeting.
It's a good thing I wasn't there, because I didn't want to get all these other ones sick from what I was dealing with and so on, so there you have it. Well, with that, folks, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, motion by Jim, second by Catherine, adjourn, all in favor, aye. Opposed? We are out of here, folks, eight eighteen, thank you very much.